Good evening and welcome to the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four business meeting. Please stand and we're going to be led by the pledge by Mrs. Galelo's fourth grade class.
And to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And what are those in our classroom?
I love the way that class was set up.
They were good.
Well done. They were good. Congratulations, Mrs. Galelo's class.
All right.
Okay, the public, I'm going to open it up to public comment on any of the listed agenda items. We're not seeing any speakers. We're going to move to the consent agenda. Sam, the first one, please.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, casset agenda, not cassette. Items two through twelve as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Tonight, the board's approving the minutes of the previous meeting, CSC CPSE placements, additions to the substitute listing, amending and approving additional work hours for various staff members, budget transfers, an overnight trip, science research, students are going to Albany at the end of the month. We're approving an agreement with Pace University for field study for their graduate and undergraduate students in our buildings, approval of the spring twenty twenty-four coaches and stipends, approving James Apostolico for the game day coordinator for the spring season, approving an SMOA with CSCA for hourly employees regarding early dismissal or school delays. We're approving, the board is approving a commencing legal action on behalf of the district for a former employee who owes funds to the district. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. We're going to move into reports and I'm going to let the students go first. Kayla?
Okay, um, sorry, it's a lot, so I have it on my phone. Okay, so, um, winter sports have had sectionals, um, of all sorts. Varsity cheerleading recently got back from the UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship in Florida, where they earned the title of thirteenth in the nation in a division with over sixty teams. Track and field section champs are Abby Hausen, Julia Toth, Kate Nielsen, Jonathan Patterson, and Izzy Qui. Home basketball games will be livestreamed. You can watch on the pvcstd.org website by clicking on athletics where there's a live through screen, livestream section to like where you can watch the games live and in the past or past games. Upcoming basketball games, our girls' basketball sectional match is Tuesday, the twentieth at five, which in its home. And then the next boys' basketball match is an away game tomorrow at Byram Hills High School, which is their second sectional match. Wrestling, Jaden Teshar and Eswar Ordonias are section champions for wrestling and they're off to states. Alex Gekai got second place at sectionals. Nick Panessa got third at sectionals and Nick DeMichael got fourth at sectionals. Successful blood drive was recently hosted by the National Honor Society last Thursday. We collected, I believe, forty-two blood units. And thank you to everyone that donated and to the blood drive co-chairs, Eswar Ordonias and Jackie Gamaro and to Ms. Penta for all of the help. And tomorrow, there is a high school student spotlight award ceremony. That's it.
Thank you. Did you enjoy your snow day?
Yes.
Yeah, I was hoping that everybody did, so it was, I kind of surprised. I kind of didn't think it was going to happen, but anyway. All right, Dr. Luft, did she steal your thunder?
As usual, I'll do my best to not repeat many of the same, especially the athletics I have. Just a reminder, we had our third snow day of the year, so that leaves technically three snow days left into our calendar year, in which after that time, we would then start to take away from the spring break, so hopefully we don't get there. I have participated in a number of legislative forums around advocacy. Actually, Barbara joined me on many of them. Some of the topics that we focused on for Putnam Valley were the pre-K allocations. As we've shared before, Putnam Valley is very interested in finding a community-based organization to partner with to offer pre-K services utilizing funds made available from New York State. The issue we run into is that funding is capped at fifty-four hundred dollars a student, and that's not enough money to partner with a community-based organization to run a pre-K program. So we continue to advocate on the state. I know the allocation in New York City is just over ten thousand dollars. That would certainly do the trick, or to provide for local control and allow us to negotiate as good of a deal as we can to service as many students in Putnam Valley as possible. So right now, the state provides us funding for seventy-four students, of which we service zero, because we don't have a willing partner for those seventy-four students. Obviously, if we can negotiate a contract ourselves, while we may not be able to service seventy-four students, maybe we service fifty, but fifty's certainly better than the zero that are currently being serviced. So that's something we continue for the second year in a row to push on our state senators and state assembly people. And the best part of the entire thing, it actually costs them zero dollars. I'm not asking for more money, I'm not asking to raise taxes, all I want them to do is to loosen up the rules about regarding the money they already make available to us. So we're cautiously optimistic that may happen. Foundation aid, as many have heard, the state made districts whole funding foundation aid and we're very appreciative of that over the last three years. And then this year, they went in and started changing parts of the formula to reduce funding for school districts. I believe fifty-four percent of the districts in our region actually lost money this year. They eliminated the whole harmless, they changed an inflation multiplier, and it's something that districts were not expecting. While we knew once it was fully funded to expect a small percentage increase each year as our costs go up, certainly we hope the state's contribution to those costs go up, that in order to take money away from districts or to freeze money on districts unexpectedly certainly puts us in a poor fiscal situation. So we're hopeful as they continue to negotiate the state budget that foundation aid is addressed. Another thing, another item that we've been advocating for is funding for green energy. As those who are aware, our entire middle school, high school campus runs on geothermal. A third of our elementary school runs on geothermal. We have solar panels around. The district has made a concerted effort to move towards sustainable green energies. And while the state make, just recently announced a hundred million dollar grant process for green energies for schools, so right in our wheelhouse, exactly what we're looking for is some, some grant funding or subsidies to finish our geothermal at the elementary school. The second sentence of the press release is it's for high needs districts. To click on this link, and while Putnam Valley is far from an affluent school district, we are not identified by New York State as a high needs district, and therefore, we are not, have zero access to that, those funds. The final item that we spoke a lot about was universal meals. As people may remember, during COVID, the lunch program was made free for all students. We saw the level of participation go up exponentially, which tells us that we had many kids that needed to eat, kids that were hungry and kids that were, that wanted to take advantage of the food program. While the state has lowered the bar to qualify, the, in a, I forget what the number was, whatever billion-dollar budget, the amount of money they would need to make meals, universal free meals for schools is a small portion of what is in the state budget. So we're hopeful that maybe they'll find the money necessary to make meals free for all students in New York. So these meetings were held with state Senator Rollison, state Assemblyman Matthew Slater, and US Congressman Mike Lawler. I also attended CSA and lower Hudson Council School Superintendent's meetings. These meetings also focused on advocacy and legal updates as we're working to build budgets. It is the advocacy season. Attended New York State recertification for lead evaluators of principals. That's a required training I must attend each year. I know the last meeting, we made a public announcement for the Young Artist Exhibit in the Cottone Museum of Art. So that's scheduled to open, our schedule, it opened on Sunday, February eleventh and runs through March third. So if you have a chance, go out there and check out our student artwork. We filmed a new episode of Inside Putnam Valley Schools with Eric Gross. Is he alive yet?
It's out now.
It's out now.
Yeah, it's up there.
So it say newly released? Is that what they say in the movies?
Newly.
No, newly released. Some of the topics, we start to talk about budget, some athletic accolades, and one final recognition of our heart of a giant, Eduardo Rosinos, who was at the Super Bowl when we filmed it. We continue our efforts to hire our new business official and our finalists are scheduled for committee interview on February twenty-eighth. Budget meetings continue. We had a meeting with the PVFT leadership this morning and Mr. Spittle and myself had the opportunity to visit Solmer School District, met with their superintendent, business official, and their facilities director, and we were actually reviewing one of, a project they have underway this year that's, has a lot of similarities, so it's something that we're looking at ourselves. So many other events, our English Honor Society had their induction ceremony, we had the National Honor Society Blood Drive at the high school, we had our Chinese New Year celebration at the elementary school. For anyone who wants to see something cute, watch five-year-olds sing in Mandarin. We had our hundredth day of school celebration at the elementary school. As we had mentioned, our cheerleaders placed third, thirteenth in the nation in their tournament in Florida, and we already recognized our wrestlers, boy basketball, girls' basketball. Indoor track is actually a girls' ice hockey team in one of our sectionals. That's a merged team with many districts, and our swimming sectionals are tonight. And then one public service announcement, spring sports registration is now open. Thank you.
Dr. Luft, the interview for the finance manager, I have it down as the twenty-eighth? You said the twentieth?
Eight.
Sorry.
The twenty-eighth, right?
Twenty-eighth, yes.
Okay, good, good, yeah. The other thing, Dr. Luft, have you gotten any feedback from the county on the voting machines?
I have not heard from anyone. I believe that Ms. Bellino was in a meeting with.
The county said they will not be provided. I said, oh, I mean, whether or not Westchester, Platteville.
They won't.
The county commissioner said there will be no heat.
How about the legislature funding some of it?
How about Bernie? Let me.
I'll call Executive Bernigan tomorrow, yeah. Because he said that might be a possibility. Didn't promise it, but he said he would see the tenor of the legislature. It's nominal, I mean, to pay that, I bet Westchester can do it and Dutchess. I don't know why we can't. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to move to our presentations, and the first one is the budget planning presentation on special education.
So I'd like to invite up Dr. Natalie Doherty and Ms. Melissa Estrella. Welcome.
Very welcome.
No? There we go. There we go.
Good evening. I'm Natalie Doherty, Assistant Superintendent for PPS, and with me I have Ms. Estrella. She's going to start off the presentation for us.
Hello, good evening. So each year, we, and throughout the school year, we continuously reference the New York State continuum of services. This helps us shape our current classes, support our students and their needs. So this is something that we're constantly looking at, to shape our classes to our related service options. With that, New York State also provides us with a New York State approved schools, and those are highly specialized programs to meet our students' needs. We currently have students benefiting from the New York State approved school system. Not only provides smaller setting for our students' structured support, but it also provides various avenues of academic, social, and emotional needs. And with that, while our students might not be within our school building proper, our level of communication with the New York State approved schools and families is constant. We are constantly making sure that our students' needs are being met, we're providing extra supports when needed, and moreover, we're always working with the families and schools to determine if the student is ready to come back to their home district.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about our personnel for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As you can see by our graph, our numbers really haven't changed very much over the years. We're going to go ahead and recommend one special education supervisor, which is Ms. Estrella. We're going to recommend going into next year, twenty-four point six teachers, special education teachers. Last year, we budgeted, if you remember, twenty-five point five, but we, we did not need another full-time person. We just needed one period every other day, so we were able to really hold back on that one person that we were anticipating. For those that don't know, special education meetings happen throughout the spring. So we're not done with our annual reviews until May, sometimes June. Sometimes there are meetings that are held even over the summer. So it really is our prediction for us, and things change all the time. You can, you know, think you're going into a meeting with one outcome, and because it's a committee and, you know, they're thoughtful discussions, things can change. So we make our best guesses about our personnel. So our best guess going into next year is twenty-four point six people. Our teaching assistants, this year, we had to add one person in the last minute. We budgeted for thirty-five, but we brought a student back from an out-of-district placement. So we saved on that incredible amount of tuition, but we're able to support that student with a, the teaching assistant in the school. And then one student just really, because of his disability, had some changing needs, and we had to add somebody this year. We were able to access some of our grant funds through the six-eleven grants in order to support those positions. Teaching aides, we have our teaching aides in the district. We only have four of them. They support both special education and general education. A majority of their work is done in special education. Our clinicians, we consider our psychologists and social workers in this line, so we have seven of those. We're going in at seven for next year. Our occupational and physical therapists, we have one full-time physical therapist, one full-time occupational therapist, and then a point eight occupational therapist that were K through twelve, with our, with our students in kindergarten through twelfth grade, sorry. And then speech therapists, last year, we budgeted for three point four nine. We did not use the point four nine this year. We are extraordinarily tight, so I'm going to recommend that we go into it again next year at three point four nine. If we don't need it, we will not use it. But we are extremely tight with our speech and language services, support services. So our behaviorist, as you can see on my slide, we have been contracting with an agency through BOSIS. That agency has served us well. It's always a challenge because there are outside people coming into our school, and they have scheduled times. So if they have a crisis in another school, they may not be able to come to our school. Or if they have to be in one building and there's a situation in that building and they can't get to the next building. So we have, again, it's been as successful as, as it has been, which has been great for us, but we really believe that this coming change that I'm going to recommend by using our own person instead of a BOSIS contract, somebody through BOSIS, is going to serve our district better. On top of not having a behaviorist through BOSIS, we do not, I checked with Ms. Vigarella, that we really get such little aid back on that service because of the type of service it is. I think there was a whole line, it's like, I don't remember the percent, but it was such a small amount that it really, it does not offset the cost. Last year, we spent about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in behavior services. Behavior services are for students, a majority of them are on the autism spectrum disorder, and require highly specialized parent training, highly specialized interventions, behavior plans, functional behavior assessments. So it really is a no-brainer for us to have our own person. We have a special education teacher who can provide the services. She is a certified behavior analyst. Her name is Megan Boyle. She is, I think that when parents hear this, they're going to be really thrilled. They know her work. She knows our district, she knows our students. She is so well-respected in our community. She actually won that really nice award last year with the state that we recommended her for. So we're going to do a one-year trial. We're going to post her position as a leave replacement so that we have one year to see how this works, see how she likes it, see how it fits for the district, and see, and certainly I'll report back to you at some point next year on how that's going. But that is my recommendation.
Natalie?
Sure.
The BOSIS, the person we contracted with from BOSIS, they were not here full-time?
No, they were not. They were here often, obviously, and we had several, we had a couple of different people over the years. And some, this year, we have two people, two different people, so.
But this would also give you consistency for, you know, to schedule and to really know the students and know what their needs were.
Absolutely.
And what the teachers needed in terms of training or support.
Absolutely, and I also hope that, you know, some of our behaviors happen at recess. A lot of our behaviors happen during those non-structured times, whether it's on the bus or during recess or during lunch or during music. I'm hoping that these kind of consultant teacher services will align consistency with their behavior plans. Not only that, I honestly believe that she can help grow this program, and I think that there's an opportunity for the district, that if, if we grow it and this works for us and we provide her services, specifically her services and the way she operates as a behaviorist, I really believe we'll have the opportunity to tuition in students in the future. I believe that it will attract students with a different level of need that we can provide. So I do think that it's an opportunity in the future, very much so.
Natalie, I'm sorry, you may mention this, and I missed it, I'm sorry. It, when, she will be K through twelve.
She'll be K twelve, yes.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question about what?
Of course.
We talked about that currently we're spending about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on BOSIS services that are not consistent, they're not every day, they're not all day. Certainly, I, I'm under the assumption that if one behavior specialist can't come from, from the contracted BOSIS support, that another one is sent, so it's not that consistent person. In, contrary to spending the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, how much would it cost us to be able to bring on this behavior specialist, and what would the difference be?
So I don't have Ms. Boyle's, I don't have the current salary, but I can certainly get you that information.
So she is an existing staff member who will be taking over, so that right there would be a wash. What the, the difference would really be the salary of whoever takes her position.
Oh, who's taking her position.
So we typically budget about a hundred thousand dollars, which covers salary and benefits for a new employee. So that sort of, that's the number you could have in the budget.
Right. Right off the bat, it's fifteen thousand.
So right off the bat, we're saving money, getting more of a service, so I just want to make that super clear to the public.
Super clear, yes. Thank you for doing it. Yep, thank you. So.
Okay. So, future goals, right? Post-COVID considerations are reshaping special education in New York State. This year, one of the guidance memos that New York State provided to all schools is to consider increasing graduation age to twenty-two for students receiving special education services. Now, with that being said, it's either meeting graduation requirements or continuing on to age twenty-two. The way we would do that is through a committee on special education meeting to determine if that's appropriate or not for each student, but that is something that we're closely monitoring and watching to support our students as they move forward to age twenty-two.
Melissa, you said that's a recommendation, so.
It's, it's, it's a mandate.
Okay. Just, just to be.
Sometimes the state likes to use the word guidance.
Yeah, it was called guidance.
Okay. I just wanted to add in one second.
House educators got to read between the lines.
It is, so it is a mandate. What is a recommendation is that we let them finish either on their twenty-second birthday or in the year in which they turn twenty-two. Most districts, including ours, have decided that at their twenty-second birthday, they will exit their services, provided that they're, they are connected with other agencies and a post-secondary plan.
Right.
And it does have, so I think the biggest impact that this has on a budget is ultimately one year, right? So those students that normally fall off and then the preschool students who enter in, it's sort of, they, they tend to even out your numbers, so to speak. I mean, I don't like to talk about children in terms of numbers, but in terms of students, we have maybe two or three students who end with us and two or three students that may have higher needs coming in. So they sort of balance each other out in terms of budget-wise. So really, for one year, we feel it, and then it becomes part of our budget cycle. Because of our student enrollment is down, a lot of our costs are able to sort of stay fairly even, and just with the standard incremental, you know, increases that are across the region. But I just, I did really want to make that part clear.
And to that point, the third bullet there, skipping the second bullet, looks at smaller classes over five-year projections. So what that means is, over the next five years, we will continue to monitor our preschool, incoming kindergarten students to be able to provide the needs that they require when coming into kindergarten, but not only just kindergarten year, looking forward all the way through graduation. And what does that mean for Putnam Valley and what services can we provide that are, that is very, that is highly specialized? Part of that piggybacks onto what Dr. Doherty was saying about the behavior intervention specialist as well. With that being said, back to the second bullet, right now, fourteen percent of our Putnam Valley population now utilizes various portions of the continuum to support their academic, social, and emotional progress. While we always strive to meet the least restrictive environment, we have seen an increase of academic, social, emotional needs across the region, and this is really a result of the post-COVID era, if you will.
Now, is that normal? Is, I mean, is that an average? If you look at districts in our area, I mean, is that, are we high, are we low?
So I think we're fairly average. We've always been average. The average used to be about thirteen percent. We always hovered around between twelve point nine and thirteen point one percent in general. I think everybody has seen an increase. A lot of our building-level support, fortunately for this district, are strong, so, especially at the elementary level, so we have a lot of pre-referral strategies that we can use. And if we see growth and progress during those interventions, it's an indication to us that we shouldn't classify a student, that, that they're making progress, it just, they needed a different service or they needed more support. So fortunately for us, we're not as high as many other districts have gone, but it is a little bit higher than normal and certainly is an increase for us in terms of our services. I think the biggest number of, of an increase that we have seen over the years is our students with, that struggle with mental health concerns. And we've talked about that through, you know, through various meetings that we've had. I would say that that is where we see the biggest need, and I would say that that is regional.
And is that, if you had to pin like what, like the cause, I know it's easy to say COVID, but is it, we test better, we're more aware, we're more observant, we're, parents are more concerned?
I think a lot of social media, I think that if you ask parents, a lot of it is, is around social media and general anxieties. I would say that that is where we see the biggest need, and I would say that that is regional.
And is that, if you had to pin like what, like the cause, I know it's easy to say COVID, but is it, we test better, we're more aware, we're more observant, we're, parents are more concerned?
I think a lot of social media, I think that if you ask parents, a lot of it is, is around social media and general anxieties and depression. Yeah, I would say that those are the biggest things.
Okay, thanks. And our goals will continue as they do each year to seek out specialized reading.
Can you speak up just a little bit more?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Each year, we seek out specialized reading programs for our teachers to take advantage of, to support our students within K through 12 programming. We are, as Dr. Doherty mentioned, exploring the consultant teacher services in various means, such as the behaviorist supports. So we will continue to explore new options to enhance our programming as we move forward.
So here we are, behavior interventions again, and that five-year projection. What we do see is, we know who our three-year-olds are, right? We know who our four-year-olds are. So we see the needs for those smaller classes, so it's 812 students who are in these specialized programs within our district and that are going to need these supports in the coming years, for, for sure. We know who they are, and that's why it's really important for us to do a constant five-year projection, projecting out. Those needs can change generally, they don't change drastically, but it gives us a good idea about what services we're going to need. And I think that having Ms. Boyle provide these kind of consultant teacher services using her behaviors, behavioral skills, is going to allow us to, so that if one year we have a smaller cohort of our 812, we may be able to bring students from the outside into our programs because we have somebody who specializes in sort of aligning our smaller class programs. So I think it's a real opportunity. And then CPSC, our increasing needs, we see for sure across the state, our CPSE students, sorry, let me.
We say it.
I will. I didn't change that one, sorry. Committee on Preschool Special Education. So this is our preschool services. We see a sharp increase in needs in terms of the disabilities and what they look like and their needs. The New York State Education Department is certainly moving towards, as you just heard Dr. Luft, is moving towards districts being entirely responsible for preschool, both for universal pre-K. Many districts are starting that, as Dr. Luft said. We, a few weeks ago, we met with one of our attorneys, talking about whether or not we should be looking at creating our own contracts for preschool providers, whether or not we can redo our request for proposals for our other agency, local agencies, if they can use our classrooms, looking at different options to start that. But what we are going to be held responsible for, regardless of universal pre-K, is 4410 services. And 4410 services is the preschool portion of special education. That is OTPT speech and CIT services, special class services, special class integrated services. So we are going to be held accountable in the next, in the coming years for those services. We are already held accountable, but it's usually through other agencies. So how it works is, the county pays for a portion of it, and the state pays for a portion of it. And then we generally go through agencies or through the county providers to service our students. In the coming years, even right now, we're, we're faced with a shortage of physical therapists, occupational therapists, and speech therapists. We are, some of our students in Putnam Valley have not gotten physical therapy since September because there's such a shortage and because the state has not changed their rates. We're still going to be held accountable to provide those services. So whether that is becoming a 4410 program, which I am filling, you know, completing that application process at this time, and then supplementing the income, or, I, I'm not even sure how it's going to work. We're still, you know, attending state conferences, and the answer seems to be a blanketed, "You're accountable." So we don't really know what that means, but I'm assuming, I've been doing this long enough to know that we're going to have to supplement those services in order for our students to get services. So that is coming down the pike, and I think that everybody should be aware of that. And then the last.
Sorry, jumping real quick. So that piece that Natalie just spoke about, like, that's a universally broken system.
It is a broken system.
It's not a Putnam Valley issue, it's not a Putnam County issue, it's not a West Coast, it's a statewide issue. At every meeting I go to with superintendents, there's conversations about how are we going to handle the services that these students are not receiving, and what options do we have? And I think Dr. Doherty pointed out, we don't provide the funding, the county and the state do. That number is not sufficient for what these providers can get from anywhere else, and therefore, they're not interested in servicing what is really our neediest population, right? All the research shows that if we address some of these issues early on, the students will, are more likely to not need them into the future. So it's something that we're keenly aware of, but I would want to point out something that all districts are struggling with, and again, requires advocacy at the county and state level to get that funding up. Because we can, we probably have some of our staff that would be willing to do it, but they would be doing it at a price that's far less than what they otherwise would receive for doing services for our students within their contract. So that, we run into issues there. Thank you.
And I'll just talk about my last bullet, which is the mental health needs of our students. I know in Mr. McCarty's presentation and with the board, we discussed the need of a school counselor. I cannot stress enough how, how much that could help our students in terms of proactive work, getting in there, getting into classrooms, meeting the needs of our students before they become so needy that are, that they're, you know, have to be classified and receive mandated support services. I'm hoping that those types of building-level supports that we're building will be helpful. And then I also just want to report out on Cove Care. As you know, we have, Cove Care has a satellite clinic out of our high school in the evenings. It's two evenings a week, from 3 till about 7:00 PM. We are, we now have a waiting list, so clearly the need was there. It took us a couple of years. I partnered with Cove Care. In order to do this, we're hoping to add somebody, but it is certainly a challenge to find a second person, but we are, we are in the process of, of looking for people. So we're hoping that we can increase those supports for students, for our students in this community, and they serve just Putnam Valley students. And I'm, you know, we're thrilled that it's full because we're meeting some of our students' needs, but now we're building a waiting list, so.
Is most of it the lack of people out there, or lack of money to pay the people that are out? Like, are there people out there, but there isn't enough money, or there aren't enough people?
I think it's both. I think it's both. I think that, I don't know. It's, it's fairly attractive to some people. I think that, I don't really deal with the salary end of it because it's Cove Care, it's really Cove Care that is paying them, but I think the location, the time, and, and the money are all issues to finding people right now.
And there definitely is a shortage of behavior health.
Of mental health workers, for sure.
But if they paid a decent salary, I'm sure they would attract many more individuals. That's the problem.
They're, they're not out there right now.
They're just not out there. I think that the schools, I mean, the conversations that I'm involved with, with my local colleagues really are, these colleges are really trying to beef up their programs to, to provide more providers. But generally, these programs, like a, a speech and language pathology program or a social work program, they tend to be small programs. Like, I think Mercy's social, uh, speech pathology program was like 35 graduates a year, you know, or something like that. Like, it was so small. So regionally, there's just not a lot. But I think that they're trying to beef up their programs at the post-secondary schools. Any other questions?
Can you talk about the summer programs and the staffing for that and the implications?
Sure. So our extended school year program, again, it sort of goes back to, our meetings are just starting to happen, our annual reviews. We run a specialized program for our smaller self-contained classrooms, our students who regress over vacations, who regress, who would regress without the services over the summer. That is who our extended school year service is for. Anybody who we determine, and we use a lot of data to determine whether or not a student progresses, whether that's over a week break or a long weekend, and definitely over a summer break. So that's, we generally run K through 12. There's usually three to five classrooms, am I right? Three to five classrooms. They're usually our, our smaller classes, 812s. Sometimes we offer specialized reading services over the summer if we really believe that a student is going to regress so significantly, but that's who we service over the summer. And we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a question about the, the TAs.
Sure.
We have a wonderful amount of TAs, and my, my question really is about, now that we're trying to bring a behavioral specialist onboard, and the TAs are probably working with the students mostly who need those services, will there be training embedded for TAs and aides with that particular person for things like recess and more unstructured times of the day?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So that is one of the things that I'm most excited about, is that it will be consistent training for our TAs, hands-on training, right in the classroom, right at recess. For our monitors, who, every exit interview that I have done over the past few years from our monitors who take other jobs or leave, every single one of them said, "I just wish I had more training." And it's really hard to do because lots of times, we're hiring them, you know, in August for September start, because we don't always know our needs. It's a position that tends to change. So I'm really hopeful that using Ms. Boyle's services right out on recess, providing that training, hands-on training, is going to be so helpful. Our bus monitors.
Right.
Who really would love to know how to deal with certain behaviors. I think that this is an opportunity that we're, everybody's going to feel it in a positive way.
That's great. I also just want to commend the district because for the special education rate to not have increased as much as more than half a percent or 1% is, in this time that we're in, amazing. And I think a lot of that is attributed to the MTSS work that the district has been engaging in, which is multi-tiered systems of support. Margaret talks about it all the time, catching kids early to be able to give them what they need so that they never arrive to that place. So kudos to your team for doing that. And then lastly, I just want to know about, how can we, as a board, advocate for the funding to be able to raise that level of salary for specialists, for speech providers in OT and PT?
For preschool.
Like, what is it that we need to do to make some noise about the fact that what, you know, this seems to be a common theme, that the state never gives us enough money for the task at hand, right? It's been a long time. I'm not saying that we're going to change Roman a day, but I, I think that we need to do more. We need to make, make it known that our children, for, for a child to not have been getting a service in September, I have a really big problem with that. Because if that was my kid, I'd be standing on that side of the microphone. So I think that we need to really figure out what, what we need to do about that to make sure that that's happening.
Absolutely. So I am going to be attending some local forums, so I will pose that question and certainly come back with what we can do. I think that Kate Millman, Mill, Millman, with the state, she gave a presentation a couple of weeks ago. I think she's gonna, going to be doing another one soon. That's where I'll pose the question.
Great, thank you.
I will.
If there's something we can do.
I think the scary part is how little the district has, what little oversight we have, right? You're talking about three and four-year-olds that do not attend our schools. We're talking about programs that provide these services that don't happen in our schools, and we're talking about a funding that doesn't come from our schools, but the only piece we get to own is the accountability to make sure all those things are happening outside of our schools. So there's, other than advocating for relief, there's very little that we can do internally to provide, to fill those gaps that, that exist.
And the other thing that's happening in many districts, if you need to send a child out to a specific program, those programs are booked and full for months. So now what happens? It's tragic that they're not getting the services that they need, but there's such, there's more clients than there are programs out there.
And the sad thing is, by the time those children who, who have these complex issues get to our school, if it's not remediated. Their mind is already shaped, and it's that much more difficult for our staff and, and the district to, to work with these children, and it's criminal, it's criminal.
So Kate Millman, who did this presentation, she's the preschool regional person or state person, she did a, a survey, like, what, what were the major issues, and that created a Wordle, and every single slide she did was like, funding was like the biggest, you know, part of the Wordle.
I agree.
So I, I can't, I don't know what more we have to do regionally to scream at the state to let them know we need help. We need help for our youngest students. And without changes from the state and that kind of support, we, it won't change. And then the second part, I do want to just say thank you to Ms. Estrella, to, she really has so much input and so much work on a lot of our, she runs all of our Committee on Special Education meetings and has really earned the respect of our teachers. And so, so to your point about our, our classification rate, it's always a tricky balance on when do you classify and when do you continue on building level services. And Ms. Estrella and the teams of our teachers really are so incredibly thoughtful about that process, and I appreciate that very much from all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly compliment both Natalie and Melissa for their leadership over our special education department. I think we have a fantastic program. I'm always amazed by the services we're able to provide students, the services that we could render in-school, which, which many other districts would send their children out to an out-of-district placement to receive that same level of service. And it's truly miracles that happen in many of those classrooms, and what our teachers and teaching assistants are able to do under Natalie and Melissa's leadership is, is really something special to see and directly saves money for our taxpayers, right? It is far more expensive for us to send students out to be educated than it is to provide those services here in Putnam Valley. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation is our operation facilities and transportation, and I would like to invite up Mr. David Spittle. Do you want to use Natalie's slides? Like, complicate it?
They're more fun in mine, believe it or not.
Yours is nice, too, Dave.
I spilled water all over myself.
At least it's water.
Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dave Spittle. I'm here to talk about the budget for 2024, '25 for facilities and transportation. The presentation in the fall is always more exciting. I get to show pictures of the beautiful facility with the, with the students using all of the, the new great aspects of our campus. This is not as much fun, but this is more important. So first, tonight, I'm going to talk about transportation. Here is the list of our transportation team as of now. These are, we have support staff of three, and then we have drivers and monitors to make up the rest of the 21.2 FTE. The contract bus company that we use, we have a hybrid system, for those of you who don't know, where we have our own internal staff delivering our students to and from school, and then we also have a contract bus company, which is right now Orange County Transit. Jamie Viveros is the dispatcher, and we work very closely with, with her, and she's got about 40 drivers and eight monitors there. We deliver, we do about 9,000 runs a year, just so you know. This is the historical transportation staffing. You can see it was very consistent, 2019 through 20... You can see it was very consistent, 2019 through 2023, where we had internally, this is Putnam Valley staff, 18 FTEs, 10 drivers, five monitors, and three support staff. That would be the mechanic, dispatcher, and head bus driver. So why I was so grim in the fall about our transportation up here was that we, there was a nationwide shortage of bus drivers, and we were having very difficult time replacing retiring drivers that we had. So we were down to, in the fall, we were down to five drivers, five monitors, and three support staff. So, you know, why that, why that is so, well, I'm gonna talk about recruitment success. So since then, we've had success. I, I was really worried about our transportation department in the fall when I talked to you folks last. And we decided after, thank you to the board for negotiating a better CSEA contract that made us more attractive for applicants from a pay standpoint. And so that we were able to, we came up with, we had a meeting. It was, it was Jill and Natalie, Jeannie Denike, and Dana Lopez to really talk about how we're gonna recruit, because even changing the CSEA contract and getting that ratified over the, over the summer didn't suddenly open the floodgates for applicants. In fact, we had none. So I was really worried that without, without being able to hire, that the transportation department was just gonna, gonna shrivel up and die here in Putnam Valley. So we had success. And we had a big, we had a plan. We talked about, you know, the creative in the advertising and how to advertise for new applicants. And we hit a vein of really lovely people. And we got one particular driver hired who loved working for us so much that he, he had another seven of his friends who he worked with come and apply. So it was a success. And we were able to hire eight drivers, you know, six full-time and then two at .6. So that's why, how we got up to the 21.2 driver, the 21.2 FTEs, 12.2 drivers. They're actually whole people, but it's, it's 12.2 drivers, now six monitors and three support staff. So usually when we're talking about increased staff here, it, you know, I used to sit on the board, we're like, oh no, that's more money for us. But really, this was a huge benefit to the district. This is what it looked like back in the fall. This is just a snapshot of what I look at when I look at the routing for our district. There's morning runs, there's midday runs that sometime include field trips. And then there's after-school runs, which also include sports. And then, then, and then taking care of the, the students that stay after for, for activities and, and sports and all that. In this pic, in this graph, if you can look at it, the ones in gray were, were accomplished by Orange County Transit, and the ones in yellow were by our team. And our team at that point had five drivers, and we were able to accomplish 12 daily runs. And the way we were able to do that is we had Mike, our head bus driver, Sarah, and our mechanic all out on the road doing runs. Because every run we gave up to Orange County, I, I knew had a tremendous negative impact on our budget. So this is what it looks like, this is what I have planned for March, where we're, we have taken a lot of runs back. We're down, we went from 35 runs to Orange County, down to 25 daily runs. And so now we're able to, to do 22 ourselves, plus field trips. We're in the middle of the day, and Orange County will still do most of our, our sports runs. Why or how did hiring new drivers help Putnam Valley? Overhead utilization. In my previous life, I, I was in business, and I, it was pretty obvious even to anyone looking at a business that if you have five drivers and an overhead that included 17 vehicles, a mechanic, and a dispatcher, and a head bus driver, that that was an unsustainable situation. Our cost per run, which I look at closely, had skyrocketed to the point where it was above what the Orange County was charging. So it was an unsustainable situation. And if we were unable to hire, I think that would have been a recommendation to, to not continue to do these ourselves. So here's what, and we, like I stated, we maximize our fleet capacity, owning 17 vehicles, two or three of which are usually out of commission, whether it's for DOT inspections or repairs. So that includes three, I'll get into our vehicles more later, but that's what it includes. But with these new hires, I'm also able to get Mike and, and Sarah in the office more to manage the staff and, and to answer the phones and plan and hire and do all the stuff that they do. And they are now more available for field trips, so we don't have to pay Orange County for a field trip, and unscheduled runs, which happen every day. And for substitutes, when a bus driver is out sick, then now they can fill in. And again, customer service to, to improve our, our service. I, I will stop here to say that, that they, Mike and, and Sarah particularly, and, and Ryan, our mechanic, really stepped up and did an amazing job of getting us through what I saw as a crisis in our transportation department. And our service, I don't think diminished in any way while they were out on the road and dealing with this. So hats off to them. More importantly for a budget presentation is that this move saved a ton of money. I spent a lot of time geeking out over spreadsheets and what this, what the financial forecasting looks like in our transportation department. And my analysis has this move, besides getting our, improving our service and getting those folks inside, saved about $300,000 a year to the district. Because we were able to do about 1.7 runs per driver, whereas when we hire Orange County, they do one run for a drive, they, they charge for one run. So we were able to take those afternoon runs and midday runs and accomplish those with an eight-hour driver who could do a to-and-from school, do something in the midday, and then after. So we combined those and, and took those runs back from Orange County. And they were not that unhappy about it because they, they were struggling with the same driver shortage as we, so they did complain every time we asked for a new run. The, and also, this also mitigates the risk posed by future increases from contract companies. I spoke in the fall a little bit about my concern that there was consolidation in the transportation business and that we were going, and there were shortages of drivers, and they, they all have to pay their drivers more to attract and, and retain their employees. So my prediction is that the next contract, whenever that is, will have a significant increase in our cost per run from our contract company. So taking 10 runs back from them reduces the impact of that increase in a significant way.
David, back in the day, and it goes way back, the district did all the runs self-contained. There was no contracting out. Do you think we'll ever go back to that type of formulation?
I have a spreadsheet to go with that. I do. I have it all, I have, I, I, I have a, I have an analysis of what that would look like from a financial standpoint. There are some caveats to that. We are, we are out of opportunities for eight-hour drivers that, with benefits to save us money.
Right.
So if we could hire drivers for to-and-from school at, at, you know, part-time, at five and a half hours to do, to accomplish basically what Orange County does now, and be non-benefit people, you know, get retired folks and that, like Orange County hires.
Yeah.
Then we, we could do that. It would be a ton of work for me, Sam.
I understand.
Okay.
I was just asking.
So, but yeah, I, I do have an analysis of that. We, we could look at it. I think it would be important to look at that when, when we go out to bid for our next contract or go out for an RFP, because then we'll know, you know, what, what the impact of that RFP or that, that bid looks like compared to what we can do internally. And we can look at that more closely at a further date. I have, I have a spreadsheet handy.
Thank you, David.
So a quick analysis of that was, right, there was a point in time in which it was more expensive for us to hire our own drivers, pay them their contractual rate along with the benefit package that we offer. And that's when contracted bus services started coming in. That was a far cheaper alternative. I think what Dave just pointed out is, we realized that there was an opportunity for some efficiencies where essentially with one driver with benefits could replace two routes.
Right.
An average of 1.7. So that was immediate savings to the district. So what we've done with the hiring frenzy we've gone on, we've maximized those efficiencies, right? Any efficiency where we can cancel two service runs and replace it with one driver has offered us instant savings. But we're sort of at a tipping point now where it's not, if we're just trading our driver for theirs, we're not saving any money because of the benefits.
Yeah.
But to Dave's point, we're now gonna be, we're being forced to go out to bid for a new bus company. Now, depending upon what those bid responses are, we could quickly find ourselves in a situation where it's far less expensive for us to trade our driver for a contracted one, especially if they're a part-time driver, to Dave's point. And that is something where we're looking to build that flexibility. And now, could we go out and hire 40 drivers at once? No. Nor could we afford to buy 40 buses at once.
Right.
But we want to know that we have that flexibility where, over the next three, five, 10 years, if it's gonna be cost-effective for us to do so, we could continue to build our personnel, build our team, build our fleet, and rely less on those contracted bus services where we have no control over what the escalation of costs are for them.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, so by the way, we're, we're no longer, and I begged for applicants, for drivers in every board presentation for the last five years, and I'm not begging anymore. If you, if you're interested in part-time, we have work, but, but we're, we're full. So.
So a quick public announcement for that. Part-time drivers actually make more per hour.
Oh.
Because we don't pay.
There's the ad.
There's the ad. So part-time drivers pay more per hour because the district doesn't have to cover the benefits. So we see that we have lots of retired civil servants, police officers, firefighters, city employees that have a pension, and they have their benefits covered, and they're looking for just a little part-time income. And anybody who fits that mold actually gets a higher hourly rate for, it's actually up to six hours, it's just, it has to be under, just under six hours a day. And those positions are ones where we continue to save money if we can hire drivers without benefits. Let me know if you get any applicants tomorrow.
Thanks for that pitch. So Sam's favorite subject now is the, the EV bus mandate from the state. And after, we discussed it a little bit in the last time I presented, and I did an analysis of it last year to see whether it was possible. Since then, I've done, I've been to seminars and done a ton of research as to what the incentives are and how they would apply to us, and what a transition to meet that mandate would look like from a financial standpoint. So just the, the overview of, of the mandate is that new buses purchased must be zero emission EVs starting in 2027. We can't, we can no longer buy a gas bus, as of now. They could change, everything could change. School transportation fleets must be all zero emission by 2035. That's a mandate. So in order to goad districts into achieving that mandate or give them the carrot, the state has come up with some vouchers. These van voucher for $114,000, EV bus voucher for $147,000. It sounds great, but these EVs are very expensive. I'll show you in a minute. And then we get, and that comes right off the invoice. So those, those dollars, if you buy an EV bus, then you get $147,000 right off the, the invoice there. Another interesting thing that, is that there's a scrappage voucher. If you get rid of a, a gas bus, they want you to drill a three-inch hole in the engine block and cut the chassis in half, and then they will make, then they will give you, if you prove that you've done that, they'll give you a scrappage voucher. But they're significant, $61,250 for a, a, a bus. And when, when I refer to a van, that's, that's the smaller bus that you see in the picture here. So that's a $47,500 voucher. And then for every bus you buy, the state will give you a voucher to good for EV infrastructure, for charging infrastructure, right? So, but they give you $25,000 voucher, but if you have a plan, which, as you guys know, I always have a plan, we have a plan for, if you have a plan in place for a transition to EVs, you get a $56,000 voucher towards charging. The six-vehicle per year maximum is not really a big issue for us. But if you can imagine if you had a fleet of 100 buses and you could only get these vouchers for six a year, and you have to get it done in 10 years, you're about 40, exactly 40 short, and you have to pay the full, full freight on 40 buses. For us, we don't have 40 buses. We have 14 that are in these categories.
David, what's the stick that the state is holding over us if we don't follow this? I mean, what will they do?
I don't know.
Shut us down? Deny money to us? I mean, what?
I don't know. I have no idea.
Because I, I have to tell you.
They, they very, they, and you'll see, I did an analysis of it, and the, their carrot is really there, and they've expressed this in, in some of the seminars I've been to, there is to try to make buying an EV the same price as buying a, a gas bus. That's what they want to do. They don't want it to feel any pain in you transitioning your fleet over to EVs from a financial standpoint.
That would be good if they can do that. The difficulty is, this is a new technology. We had that cold spell just a couple of weeks ago where temperatures never got above 30 degrees for three or four days. AAA, if, if you Google, Google them or go into their, their site, they had more calls for EVs that could not start or EVs that lost power mid-trip because the cold air decreases the battery life.
I know.
By 20, up to 50%, especially if you put the heat, heat on in one of those. Likewise, the, the lithium battery, so many car corporations right now are investigating hydrogen as a fuel, and the sodium battery to replace the lithium because the lithium is so dangerous to the environment.
So I, I think you'll see in my plan here that we, we are gonna plan to, to meet the state mandate, but do it in the most conservative way possible.
If you can, like one, one every two years.
Well, no, you'll see, I have it, I have a spreadsheet for this. So, and you'll see it in a minute.
I, I, I think this is such an enormous waste of money for us, and, and let me tell you why. It is a new technology, they're refining it constantly. The lithium battery is gonna go the way of, of, you know, the Stone Age. It will be replaced by the sodium, which they're ready to put on the market in three years, which is much safer, less damage to the environment. You gotta look at one of these lithium mines. They destroy whatever, wherever they're digging this stuff up. And most of it's done, you know, in, but plus, the whole thing with the EVs that bother me, and, and I, I'm sorry to be on a platform here, but it gets me crazy. 12 to 14% of climate change gases come from every single combustion engine combined in the world. 50% methane being the number one, come from farm animals, cows, pigs, chickens, horses, that we continually raise. Part of that 50% is also the deforestation of our rainforests, which is destroying the climate. And then 25% that's left comes from industrial nation. And then 25% that's left comes from industrial nations that do not have regulations, that don't filter their coal-burning furnaces or their oil-burning furnaces, much of it in newly acquired industrial sites within many emerging nations, and China being one of the biggest violators. So, we're looking at this money and this concept at such a huge cost to do what? To do what? It frustrates me, that's all.
So, let me jump in real fast. So, you're not into the EVs, then?
What's that?
Nothing.
I want to make sure you're getting assault down back there, right? 50% comes from fluctuates, as we're talking about.
No, it's true. Farm animals and the deforestation.
I'm not going to debate it.
If the state mandated that we had coal-fired buses and we run those, then I would be doing the analysis for that, all right?
I know. David, it's not on you.
To see what the impact of the...
Absolutely. God bless you. You do a great job. You really do, and you're very thorough. The state has always been a point of contention with me, and on this one, they take the supreme prize, I swear.
All right. So, let me answer a couple of those questions, and then I'll let Dave continue on with his presentation. So, the obvious stick is transportation aid, right? If they stop aiding our gas buses at 66% of the money that we spend on them, we're in big trouble. So, the state has a very easy stick that they can use, because they subsidize 66% of our costs for transportation. And if they don't provide aid on our gas buses, that's now a significant cost to us. Now, Dave will be the first person to tell you. I am the last person in the world who thinks that this state mandate will stick with the dates that they've outlined, but I do believe the mandate itself will stick. I think the timeline will shift, but I think that the mandate itself will remain. And Dave and I have had many conversations, along with Jill, regarding what is the right way to attack this. And what Dave's about to show you is, we have a vehicle replacement plan for gas, we have a vehicle replacement plan for EV. At the end of the day, the buses have to be replaced. So, when a bus is end of useful life, if we have an opportunity now to replace a gas-fired bus with an EV bus, we're talking one or two a year, to your point, at an equivalent cost, just to see what happens, right? It's our pilot program. It's our way to test how well this is going to work. We certainly don't want to buy 20 buses year one and have 10 years from now the technology be totally different.
Right, exactly.
But the other alternative is to replace a gas bus with a gas bus right now, that in six years from now, 10 years from now, they could say we can no longer use? Well, now, we have a useful vehicle that we did not take advantage of a voucher for, and now essentially, before its end of life, we're replacing it with something else. So, I think, we'll let Dave go on, but I think we were really strategic and purposeful in terms of what our replacement plan would look like. We provide, it spans 10 years, and it gives us many opportunities for, opportunities for the technology to evolve. And if the state, which I think they will, changes the timeline, then we can possibly stretch out our replacement costs even further and give more time for the technology to catch up with.
We have to do the right thing, and you don't want to, certainly, the cost is not going to bankrupt us in the replacement, I understand.
So, I have a presentation on this. It's coming, like, the next slide. We're going to start talking about it.
I hope you include the stations that need to power these up.
Okay, here we go. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And we'll answer all and any questions after this. So, here's what our gas bus fleet replacement would look like, and this is talking about the end of useful life. So, you can see on the top line here, those are the actual vehicles that we have in 2025. There's a 2007 van, that's number 62, another 2007 van. You can see these are 18 years old by then, 19 years old, the third one in 2026. We try to replace them, look to replace them at about 15 years, so we've really limped those along further. You could see down below, in the highlighted version here, the highlighted aspect, these three minivans, we already bought one, we're going to buy two more, because we have more, we have drivers, and they're very useful for a lot of the special ed runs that we do. But then, to talk about the gas bus replacement, this is what it would look like, and if you just multiply out, these are the costs over here, no, those are the state incentives, I'm sorry. The cost of the gas bus and van are down there, about $110,000 for a gas bus, $85,000 for a gas van, and I just multiplied that out. And what, something the state has also done to try to, another carrot, is they've extended the ability for us to finance these from five years to 12 years, so it makes the pain spread out a little bit further. My analysis here, I did it at 5% financing. I don't know what Jill's using right now, but, ah, why, every time I touch this... So, if you look down at the other, at the bottom, this is an annual cost, the, right up from there to the district, okay? This is additional cost to what we're financing now. You can see towards the end, towards 2035, on the top, you know, I have to get that last 2023 van, bus replaced, wouldn't replace that if the mandate continues out past 2035. But this is the cost before the state aid, and then you get state aid on what we spend on an annual basis on that. So, the annual cost, this is over and above what we pay now on our existing fleet that we're still financing some of those buses, right? So, it's about $322,000 at the end, you know, really about $1.2 million, but then it's, then we get state aid and it's financed, and these financed numbers will continue in perpetuity there. So, the net cost is about $322,000. You can see, this is the plan, and I also wanted to try to spread it out so we don't, you know, this could change, you know, you could look forward in 2030, and maybe those three 2017 vans that I have scheduled to be replaced in 2030, '31, and '32, maybe they can all wait until 2032. You know, by then, we'll see. We'll get a condition report from the mechanic on those.
So, Dave, this is just the fleet. It's not including gas versus electric charge.
This is if we did it, this is if we replace them all with gas. If the EV thing never happened, if Sam's dream came true...
But it doesn't include any fuel charges, is what I'm saying.
What's that?
Your numbers don't include fuel charges, correct?
The numbers don't include fuel charges, right. We do spend about $180,000 a year on fuel right now, and it depends on the gas price that gets us, but that includes Orange County, what they use as well. So, but in my next slide, I do have an analysis, because an electric bus does cost less to run, right? It costs less to charge a battery than it does to fill a gas tank. It's about what they say, and I've Googled, I did a bunch of Googling on it, they say it's about 35 cents a mile cheaper to run an electric bus than a gas bus from a fuel standpoint. So, I put that in this analysis here. So, this replaces, this is, we do the EV transition, and this is if we replace the vehicles at the same rate as we did the gas vehicles, when, at the end of useful life, basically, right? And I have the same exact plan laid out here, and I multiplied, the cost, you can see an EV van is $240,000, that's an average cost. I don't have an exact quote on that yet, I'm working on that. An EV bus is $380,000, that's an average, it's very expensive. You can see the vouchers there, I put in from the previous couple slides ago, and the scrappage fees. So, I multiplied all that out, and if we follow this plan, you can see below what the cost would be there, the gross cost for the district, and then if we finance it over 12 years at 5%, and then we pay state aid, that would be our annual cost. So, you can see, it was about $35,000, $40,000 more over 10 years than gas. But that doesn't include the savings from driving an electric bus. So, down below, I put the savings at 25 cents a mile. I thought that was conservative, because everybody says it's about 35 cents, so I did 25 to be conservative here. And then, as we place these on, out in the field, we, every vehicle, we run averages about 15,500 miles a year, so I put that into a formula here, multiplied it times the 25 cents savings per mile by using electric rather than gas, and that saves us over this, in this plan, would save us about $329,000 in gas over that stretch. So, then, the total cost to the district, if you include that savings from gas to electric, is about $35,000. So, it's a positive $300,000. Honestly, that's not a ton over, and this is my analysis based on the numbers I just told you. I'm glad to take some critique of these numbers, happy to look at them with you, Sam, if you're interested. But also, then on the bottom, I put this charging infrastructure voucher. This money would have to, in addition to this, this money would have to go to, we don't just get a check for this, would have to be invested in charging infrastructure. But if we ran this plan, and the state maintains these incentives over this 10-year stretch, which I would imagine they would, but they might expire, they say right now they're good until 2027, then we get an additional $672,000 to invest in charging. If we're just charging our buses, we have plenty of juice coming to the campus to do that, because we're just 14 vehicles, as you can see, it's not that big a deal here. And also, you can see that this plan has us starting out very conservatively in having just one van and one bus, and we'll get one charge or the charges both, we'll get, that'll be basically free, and we will get, it'll be like a pilot program. We'll get to see how it operates in cold weather, we'll get to see, you know, what the range is, and whether it meets the manufacturers, what they claim, and we can put the, if we have to, we can put the EVs on the shorter runs. I have a whole list of every run and exactly how far they go. I would never put the kids out there on the road and have the EV run out of gas, charge, it's not going to happen. So, this gives us a look at how they operate. It gives us 10 years, in 10 years' time, you know, who knows what it's going to be? We might be biofuel or something, who knows? I don't know.
You don't know.
But this is a very conservative plan. It won't, it's very similar to what a gas bus deal would be, and so, I think it's feasible for us. If we had 100 buses, not so much, but we only have 14. Now, I don't think we do have the juice on the campus at the elementary school. I know we don't, because we, I analyzed, we had it analyzed, to charge the big buses as well, the two, all of the buses that Orange County uses right now, in addition to ours. So, that would require a heavy-duty infrastructure investment, and that's something I'm concerned about, but I, that doesn't need to be done until 2035 as of now, so we have 10 years to figure that out. So, I'm not really stressed about that right now. I think we can do this plan, and I think we can do it in a cost-effective way and a very conservative approach to it.
No, I have the most faith in you, David. I've known you for many, many years, as you well know, and if anybody can pull this off, it's you.
Thanks.
My great fear, because the state vacillates so much, is the vouchers themselves, how much of that will be available when we, you know, start moving forward on this? They have made so many promises, I mean, for instance, you know, Dr. Luft spoke about how they are reneging on, you know, the payments to the district. 54% are getting less of our districts. You never know what they're going to do, so I'm afraid...
It looks like, I mean, I'm looking at it right now, I'm getting quotes on these, the two that we plan for next year, and, you know, those quotes are supposed to, in theory, include vouchers off of the invoice on the front end, and I'm going to see how they deal with that scrappage voucher. That's going to be crazy. I don't know how they're going to deal with that. I hope I can just deliver an old bus, and that they do it, and they just give me the money off of the invoice.
Anybody have old buses they want to donate to the district?
Yeah. That seems crazy to me. I don't have the equipment to drill...
There's districts that have bought buses, or they have to be drivable, though. You can't tow it there. But there's people, there's districts that have bought used buses that were being decommissioned just so they...
Just to get that...
Just so they can drive them and scrapple. Because if it costs you $5,000 to buy a bus, and then you get $67,000 in return for scrapping it, it's a real brain...
I mean, if the state's willing to finance most of this, you know, okay, God bless you, but I have my doubts, and I've said enough. Thank you, David.
Dave, it's nice to know, it's nice to hear that you're committed to being here till 35, so...
I didn't say that. All right.
But Dave, just, Dave, but your plan in terms of budgetary impact is too small than two...
Budgetary impact would actually be, because those three vans we're going to purchase this year, the three minivans, so let me go back to it. The budgetary impact would be those, that one EV van and one EV bus. I put it in a 2025 slot, because that, I just did it by year there, but that would be next year, so you'd see that budget impact would be $34,000. Jill, you're going to have to help me with that, because I don't know whether you're going to include it as a, the entire cost before you finance it, or just the financed cost, but the impact on the budget would be the purchase of these two vehicles.
Right, right. So, what you're going to hear more, sorry, go ahead, you can jump in another. So, what you're going to hear more about later, and then every meeting moving forward, is, a couple of years ago, the district went out for a proposition to get voter approval to be able to bond money up to $500,000 to buy buses. Now that we've started our replacement cycle, the three minivans that we purchased this year, because we essentially exhausted all of our vehicles when we hired more drivers, and the two buses next year will have exhausted that $500,000. So, what we're going to have to do is put another proposition on the ballot to increase or to start a new, get voter approval to, in order to borrow money to purchase buses to be able to fund this project over the course of, whether it be 10 or 15 years, but that's something we're going to have to continue to renew, because the $500,000 after 2025 will have been spent. Now, we pay for it over 12 years, but we still have to earmark that money to pay off that, those expenses over the course. Sorry, go ahead, Jill.
Right, so the budget impact will be probably close to flat, because they're allowing us to finance them over 12 years, where right now, gas buses are only over five years, five years. So, that's how they're working it out.
Good.
Yes, I don't see any, you know, any significant change.
Real impact.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so, to the operations team, this is my crew that does all the work around here, and I'll explain that in a minute. So, historically, my staffing and the operations team has been 19.6 FTEs in 1920, 2021, and so on, you know, since I've been here. So, this coming year, we have it down to 19, flat, and I will say here, that's 100% because we have a senior office assistant, Val Mansfield, who is incredibly efficient and effective, and she kills it for us. So, we were able to, Jean used to help her in the operations office, and Jean got bored because Val was doing everything. So, now Jean is doing other things at the district office, so that .6 savings is thanks to Val. So, and here is the crew. I'm not going to, I can't pronounce some of these names anyway, so I'm not going to... Okay, so, the, this operations team, besides doing all the maintenance work that you are well aware of, they also work to save the district a ton of money in accomplishing projects that most districts would outsource and either have done out of the operating budget or be part of... budget or be part of a capital project. The carbon filtration system, the renovation of the modular building outside the elementary school, the irrigation system last summer, the HVAC work, we have an in-house HVAC guy right now, saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars, all the work he does for us. Alarm system work, our team works with, with Mike Lee's team, Matt Brady and them, and to do, and Dan, to do a lot of the work, you know, that would also usually generally be outsourced. The wellness trail was, was built and maintained by them. The bathrooms in the elementary school, we were, we did have them on the capital projects list to get that done. We did most of the work ourselves. All we had to do is, is get a flooring company in to do the floors in the bathrooms, and we were able to do, we did a pilot program of two of the twenty-seven bathrooms in the elementary school and got them done for about six thousand dollars using our staff and, and a flooring guy. And the, the budget, you know, from the architects, if we did this in a capital project, was going to be more like thirty thousand a bathroom. So, anyway, so that's classroom renovations, this happens all the time, we do that, build some basic walls and that, and office renovations. So this is work that these, these guys do, and it's not a, not a big staff. And, and so they save us a ton of money in that regard. Something else that they do is, I always have a hard time articulating this, and like, oh yeah, you know, they, the place looks great, they clean the floors and the empty garbage. Well, I know, it's because they do everything to support all of the programs for, including this board of education meeting here, they set up for it, they will take that, take it down, right? We put on, we put on a thousand shows a year between sports and, and events and like, and performances and all that. So athletic events, concerts, performances, community events, fundraisers, board of education meetings, graduations, you know, supporting the, the clubs and, and summer programs. This is what the staff, whether you, you know, cleaners and custodians, really, that's what they do, and, and they do cleaning and maintaining on the side, really. Honestly, they spend a lot of time doing that. So I just want to, to thank my team for being, making my, my life easy and, and doing this district proud. They're, they're really a great group, we have a great culture of pride in, in the district in the way we operate and the way we, our appearance here. Okay, so, I should have had a header for that. So the, the, the capital project, this presentation would have been extraordinarily long if I left that stuff in there. Dr. Luft made me take it all out today, so. So we're not going to talk about the capital project, but, because it doesn't really relate, as much as I tried to make it relate, but it didn't really relate to next year's budget. It relates to budgets out further. So, but one thing that does relate to next year's budget is we're planning to take care of this. I've shown you these pictures before, that's our track. This is the, the turf has kind of fallen apart, it's about ten years old now, and it gets a ton of use. The fencing gets a lot of use, I guess, I don't know what they're doing there, but they destroy the fence all around the whole track. And so we're looking at trying to rehab all of those things, replace the turf, resurface the track and the fencing. Jill and Jeremy are doing their magic with the operating budget to, to see if we can get that done next summer.
Wow.
Right. And, and this is just, we're just starting the planning on it, it's, it's a, it's a process, as you know, but this is kind of something the architects drew up, as you can see, you know, new colors and that for the field and, and turf. So, you know, more to come on that, but that's, that's going to be, you know, part of our financial planning for next year.
So the obvious financial implications of being able to do that within our operating budget, we were already earmarking money to fund the facilities, the larger facilities project, which will be presented to the board, or at least the recommendations from the facilities planning committee will be presented to the board in the, probably the next meeting. But the obvious savings here is if we're not, if we don't go out to bond that money, then we're not paying the interest on that money. If we have money earmarked within our operating budget that was going to be used to offset the capital project, it makes sense to just sort of fund this piece upfront.
Sure.
And not borrow the money and pay interest on it over the next fifteen or thirty years, however long we have to do that for. So that's certainly our hope is to be, it also allows us to start the work a year early, which breaks up the work. We're looking to do the parking lot in the long term, but it's hard to do a parking lot if vehicles are driving across it, because they have to get to the field. So if we do the field, which is the furthest point, then it allows us to work our way back out of the campus in terms of the other upgrades, which would likely start with voter approval the summer of 2026.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think this is our most urgent need. It, it, look at it close, it doesn't, it's not great down there. Okay, so my presentations would be nothing without, without history of Putnam Valley incorporated in the presentation, so I always do something here, because this does affect our, our budget, so I was able to put this in here. So energy in, in how we operate, whether it's the HVAC and electricity here. So a little history, the junior high school, it was called, when I, when I went there, it's now called a middle school, nineteen seventy-two to nineteen ninety-eight was electric heat. In nineteen ninety-eight, they did a EPC there, Energy Performance Contract, and, and put in geothermal there. They liked that so much, they put in geothermal at the high school when they built it here. And also in the high, in the junior high school and the middle school, in 2019, we did a EPC that put solar on the roof over there and, and produced, and we did LED lighting, reduced our electric costs and, and a building management system, which was a significant, helped us save electricity as well. The high school started with the geothermal, the ground source system in two thousand, and since then, we've been on geothermal heating cooling. So once again, mentioned this before, but not many people know it, because only about twenty people watch these presentations. So, but we have used no oil here since nineteen ninety-eight on this campus. Okay, so not many school districts have geothermal. Everybody usually uses oil or something like that. So the elementary school, back when Sam went there, nineteen thirty-five, we had coal-fired steam boiler.
I remember, I'm coming to call in, yeah.
You remember the coal? So then from sixty-three to, to 2018, we have oil burner heat and, and we had no AC before this, but now, then we had some electric AC units in the windows. In 2019, as part of that same EPC that we worked on the other schools, we did put solar on the roof at the transportation building, but we also, and it put a geothermal system that, that really heats and cools about a third of the elementary school. And the rest of it is, is, is still on oil, and we do, do some AC through, through units, window units. So this is, again, this is a really geeky thing, but this is our energy utilization index, which is really basically how efficient we are. And, and this is, I have that national average there, that, that green line, and, and this is how, how we use our energy and what energy we use and how efficient that is. And you could see, high school and middle school was like half of the national average in, in our energy utilization. We went from 2017, the EPC brought us down our electric usage in, in both of those schools. And the elementary school, the oil, the oil use went down and the electric use went down a little bit as well. And my hope is that, that red can go away. And we can get the blue down a little further.
I agree.
And if we could get down, down, you know, further by getting the electric use down and getting rid of the oil, we will be a leader in the, in the nation.
David, for, for the public certification, the comparison between replacing the existing boiler that's at the elementary school or going geo, geothermal, with all the, you know, the givebacks that I know the government will, will give us if we do geothermal, what would be the, the difference?
Sam, this is what Jeremy made me take out of my presentation today. I had a whole thing about this.
That's coming, that's coming?
No, it's going to come next time when we talk about the capital project.
Because the geothermal wells are part of the proposed capital project and not, not part of next year's budget.
That's what, that's on the cutting room floor.
Well, I.
We'll be here for another hour.
I love the geothermal.
I think that's great.
Till midnight. So, anyway, but yeah, I, I'd love to talk, talk about that, because I'm very excited about that, that possibility. And, and, and that, we'll get rid of that red and the oil. So this is the elementary school oil use since 2014. And you can see we had a significant decrease after the EPC in eighteen nineteen. You know, the, the, this fluctuates based on the temperature, really. We get a cold winter, you know, the projection here for twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, might be changing now that it's been cold this week and maybe next week. But, but this is, you can see where, see those last three, we're on a nice downward trajectory. So besides just counting on the new technologies to, to get us reducing our oil use, we use that building management system, Kerry, our HVAC guy, and, and Ray over there, we've been working diligently to try to reduce our oil consumption there by adjusting our occupancy when we're there, instead of turning the heat on at five o'clock in the morning, now we're experimenting with turning it on at six, six o'clock. And if nobody complains, maybe move it up to six-thirty. And, and the same thing on the, on the back end, at night when we're, when we're closing up, we used to just shut it, shut off the heat or turn the heat way down at, you know, at nine o'clock, when, or nine-thirty, when the, when the custodians are ready, the cleaners are ready to go, and now we're starting to turn it down sooner. So, and we're also segmenting the building into different sections and where they're occupied after school, we're going to keep, continue to heat those, and then the academic wings and the upstairs that aren't occupied, we're going to reduce them sooner. And the cleaners will have to clean hard to stay warm. So anyway, that's, so we're, we're seeing some results. It's, it's hard to measure, I mean, I'm measuring it, but it's hard to know whether the impact of, of temperature, outside temperature, you know, how much that has an impact, but you can see, I'm working, I'm working on it. This is the electric use district-wide. You can see the EPC knocked us from about three million kilowatts down to about two a year. Looks like we're going to stay there. We had a little spike in twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm not sure why. So, but we monitor this, and, and since the geothermal runs on electric, this is really our, our heat for this, this campus is all basically our cost is electricity to run our pumps and that. So, you know, spikes, either hot summers, you know, extreme heat and extreme cold have an impact on our electric consumption here.
I'm pretty sure twenty, twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two are when we were heating our buildings with the windows open for COVID. So that would explain the increase.
Yeah, that's, that was one of my, yeah. The windows were wide open, it was twenty degrees, that was killing me. Anyway, so here's our actual expenses over, over time. And you can see twenty, and, and this, you know, obviously the other factor is the cost, right? We have, we have a new contract on electricity that costs us a little bit more, but if we're using two million kilowatts a year, every penny per kilowatt costs us a lot of money, right? So there's that, there's also the price of oil fluctuates and the temperature fluctuates. But this, this over time, if we keep graphing this, will, will show us what progress we're making here. And you can see we use this, we're down about two, you know, hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars is the average, we're down over where we were prior to the EPC on a monthly, I mean, annual basis. So the march towards energy independence here has been over time, that's why I put that historical information in there. And we've really done a really great job in Putnam Valley, keeping our costs down and hope to continue that with what you, Sam mentioned with the geothermal. Looking at right now, some solar canopy options to see if we can get some more electricity produced onsite here, so we can reduce that in the future. Working hard and investigating those and, and some of the incentives, federal and state, to see if we can get that done without, with zero cost to the taxpayer. And so besides, you know, polluting less, which I think is important, then we're also, you know, girding ourselves against, you know, increases in whether electric charges or oil prices and fluctuations that really have a dramatic impact on districts. And, and, and when you have a huge spike, you know, the money's got to come from somewhere, it comes from programs. And, you know, this is what, what drives me is, is saving money so that we can invest it in the students, so that's what we're doing.
I love everything, energy-wise, the geothermal, the solar panels, all that is, makes sense to me, a hundred percent. Don't like the buses, but I already went over there. And David, you, you have done a superb job here, I mean that. You, you, how many years you been here now?
Five and a half.
Yeah, and, and that short amount of time, I mean, the things that you've projected and the things that we're doing and going to do, it's just outstanding. You and your whole department, transportation and building and grounds, just, just phenomenal. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, David.
I agree. Thanks.
Well done.
So, no more questions?
He got, he got questions along the way.
That's what you did, get, forget that thorough presentation, right?
Do you want more questions? I mean, I'll be really quick, but just look at this four, it's February, and it's still shiny. They do an amazing job, the, the parking lots are right under the snow, it's just, thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, this school looks like, I mean, it's twenty-three years old now, and it looks like people come in here, it's like, what, is it built five years ago? No, they, they take care of it.
The elementary school too.
Yeah, yeah, all the buildings.
They always look so beautiful. And I really, I'm truly just in awe. There's, there's very little time in my life when I don't know what to say. This is one of those times. I am really just in awe from the transportation piece to the things that you're being tasked with to think about these EV vehicles, right? And, and making sure that we are prepared for that and figuring out how to get our cost savings back and how our guys and, and our, our amazing women in, in the district do these projects. Like, there are so many pieces to what you just said that are just so amazing, and it's really coming from the care that you really have for our district. And I think that's the piece that has me in awe, is just, thank you so much for caring so much about our community and our kids.
Thank you, Crystal, appreciate it.
I really do appreciate that very much, we all do, thank you.
David's been part of our district since he was a youngster, serving on the board and everything else, really.
Just amazing. Great job. Sorry, Jeremy.
It's going to be hard to follow that up.
Okay.
But Sam has a longer ass.
Hard to follow it up. I do want to compliment Dave, obviously, his leadership over what is in many ways multiple departments, right? Transportation and operations are two totally different departments that Dave oversees, both of them. And, and I do appreciate his force, that I have sometimes been accused of being slightly cynical myself, maybe not as much as Sam. Dave at some point starts avoiding me, because I typically, I typically don't come to Dave with good news. Like, hey, Dave, I got a compliment about our transportation department today. But Dave is willing to take any and all feedback, works very closely with all the members of his department to ensure that issues are immediately resolved, while still spending countless hours producing spreadsheets like I've never seen before. I think Jill and I get a new one every day. I have, sometimes he has to come over and explain to me what I'm looking at, but a tremendous amount of thought and effort that goes into not pushing us in one direction, but simply planning for what would happen if we're, if we move in that direction. So I do appreciate it. I sometimes get laughs at superintendents' meetings. Most of the people I, superintendents believe more like Sam. I question, am I the only one with a facilities and transportation director that drives an EV car? And then nobody else in the room says anything, so. I do respect Dave's passion for solar. nobody else in the room says anything. So I do respect Dave's passion for solar and EV and everything sustainability. And I'm pushing hard to find some politician who really wants to take a photo op with us in front of the, what I think is the first one hundred percent, uh, sustainable energy school district that we would become if we're able to find a little bit of money to offset the cost to get the elementary school on geothermal. So that's certainly part of our plan.
They're going to brand it a zero emission school.
Yeah.
District, maybe the first, it will be the first one in the country. So we can get it done. Let's get it done. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Wow.
Okay.
Good thanks.
This resolution is gonna take the next half hour.
I know, I was gonna say.
Now.
Take a drink, Sam.
Take a drink.
Okay, now, I, I don't think we need to read the whole thing because.
No, you do. We do.
We do.
Why do we?
Because it's a roll call vote, too.
I'm so glad that I.
All right. Okay, what, what we have before us is a resolution, uh, authorizing the issuance of five hundred thousand dollar bonds at Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, to pay the cost of the purchase of school buses for said school district. This is gonna take a while, ladies and gentlemen. Here we go. Uh, I still don't know why it needs to be read, but if it needs to be read, we'll read it. Whereas at the annual meeting of the qualified voters of Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, the school district, held on May, um, sixteen, twenty twenty-three, a proposition was duly adopted authorizing the Board of Education of said school district purchase school buses as described therein at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred thousand dollars. Now such proposition providing for the levy of a tax therefore to be collected in installments with not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars obligations of said school district to be issued in anticipation thereof. And whereas it is now desired to provide for the authorization of such class of objects or purposes and for the financing thereof, now therefore be it resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York as follows. Section one, the purchase of school buses including incidental equipment and expenses in connection therewith in and for the Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, is hereby authorized at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred thousand dollars. Now, section two, the plan for the financing of the aforementioned five hundred thousand dollars maximum estimated cost shall be by the issuance of not to exceed five hundred thousand dollar bonds of said school district hereby authorized to be issued therefore pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law. Section three, it is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned, uh, said class of objects or purposes is five years pursuant to subdivision twenty-nine, a paragraph A of section eleven of the local finance law provided however for zero, oh, here we go, for zero emission school buses, uh, the period of probable usefulness, uh, is twelve years pursuant to subdivision twenty-nine A thereof. Section four, the faith and credit of said Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, are hereby irrevocably pledged for the payment of the principal of an interest on such bonds as the same respectively, as the same respectively become due and payable. An annual appropriation, let me move this up, and where was I now? Uh-oh, I lost myself. Uh, ba, 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 ba.
Section four.
Uh, wait a minute. I'm, I'm finding it. Uh.
Shall be made in each.
Section four, here we go. The annual, where's the annual? Oh, okay. An annual appropriation shall be made in each year sufficient to pay the principal and interest on such bonds, uh, becoming due and payable in such year. There shall annually be levied on all the taxable real property in said school district a tax sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on such bonds as the same became due and payable. Section five, subject to the provisions of the local finance law, the power to authorize the issuance of and to sell bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance and sales of the bonds herein authorized, including renewals of such notes, is hereby delegated to the President of the Board of Education, the Chief Fiscal Officer. And such notes shall be of such terms, form and contents, and shall be sold in such manner as may be presented by said President of the Board of Education, consistent with the provisions of the local finance law. Section six, all other matters except as provided herein relating, relating to the bonds herein authorized, including the date, the not, denominations, maturities, and interest payment dates within limitations prescribed herein in the manner of execution of the same, including the consolidation with other issues, and also the ability to issue bonds with sustain, with substantially level or declining annual debt service, shall be determined by the President of the Board of Education, the Chief Fiscal Officer of such school district. Now such bonds shall contain substantially the recital of validity clause provided for in section fifty-two of the local finance law and shall otherwise be in such form and contain such recitals in addition to those required by section fifty-one of the local finance law, as the President of the Board of Education shall determine, consistent with the provisions of the local finance law. Now, section seven, the validity of such bonds and bond anticipation notes may be contested only if, one, such obligations are authorized for an object or purpose for which said district is not authorized to expend money, or two, the provisions of law which should be complied with as of the date of publication of this resolution are not substantially complied with, and an action, suit, or proceeding contesting, or proceeding contesting such validity is commenced within twenty days after the date of such publication. Or, three, such obligate, such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution. Now, section eight, this resolution shall constitute a statement of official intent for purposes of Treasury Regulation Sections one point one fifty point two, other than as specified in this resolution, no monies are or are reasonably expected to be reserved, allocated on a long-term basis or otherwise set aside with respect to the permanent funding of the object or purpose described herein. Section nine, the resolution would take effect immediately shall be published in summary form in the official newspaper of said school district for such purpose, together with a notice of school district clerk substantially, uh, together with a notice of the school district clerk substantially in the form provided in section eighty-one, where are we? Let's come back, of the local finance law.
Only six more sections.
Amen.
Yes, call that.
I think that's it.
Second.
Oh my God. Oh my Lord.
So I have to say, that was a really well-done resolution.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
I mean, you had voice, you had expression.
I didn't know you were from Texas, Sam.
Really?
You had the southern accent.
There was a little bit of a southern accent.
I, I, I don't know where that come, well, I was down in Savannah for quite a while.
Okay, questions or comments?
Truly, but anyway.
I will.
I like how it says shall be published in summary form.
Okay, so we're gonna take a roll call vote. So we're gonna start with Crystal?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Helen?
Definitely aye.
Aye.
Say nay, you have to read it next time.
So there were no, uh, no no's, so the resolution passes. Number two, please.
Sure. Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Estefania Kierak to a probationary appointment as a bus driver effective February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at the Transportation Department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Philip Peluso to a probationary appointment of bus monitor effective February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, February twenty-fifth of twenty-five, at the Transportation Department on step three A of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Rubens Bordas to a probationary appointment of bus driver effective February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, at the Transportation Department on step two of the CSEA salary schedule prorated.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Nidia Romero Machado to a probationary appointment of bus driver, six hours per day, effective February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, excuse me, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, at the Transportation Department on step two of the CSEA salary schedule prorated.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Araceli Kramer to a four-year probationary term as an ENL teacher commencing on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and terminating on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-eight, in the tenure area of ESOL at the middle school on step two MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Kramer holds English to speakers of other languages or ESOL initial certification. In order to be eligible for an appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I'd now like to open it up for public comment on any topic.
I'll be super quick. So I am here.
State your name and.
Okay, my name is Brooke Anderson. I have three children in the, in, uh, Putnam Valley School District. I moved here six years ago from Utah and we came here and we moved here because of the school district. We came here for you guys. I've left, um, I've left these school buildings like bawling many times because this was the only support system we had. We moved away from family, from everything. So first off, I just want you guys to know how privileged I am to be here and have my three children being here and raised. So that's most important. And I want to tell you as well, um, I'm a representative for Defensive Democracy. It's a new organization that's popped up to support teachers, public education. So it's, um, we are, Defensive Democracy, uh, is a nationwide organization and they, they started here, uh, in Beacon. And we advocate for public schools, libraries, educators, and administrators. We educate the public about extremist organizations by pulling aside the curtain of patriot and parent that these organizations hide behind. So, uh, mainly I just want you guys to know that, that we are here and that parents have your back and that we are, um, coming together and to stand by you guys. And we're so grateful. So that was the biggest thing. I just wanted to introduce you guys and, and know that there's organizations coming together to support you. So, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, um, upcoming meetings?
So our next meeting is scheduled for March fifth. That'll be the first time we look at the full budget presentation. So Jill and myself will be presenting the budget in its entirety for the first time. And then those budget discussions will continue uh, through March or following meeting, March twenty-first, there'll be a continued conversation regarding the school budget.
Okay, um, board member comments?
I, um, the, the other day, and Barbara, you were there and Jeanette, you were there at the, uh, that kindergarten celebration of Chinese New Year. I, I, I am so amazed at the, the great works that go on, you know, with our, our children and the excellent staff, that, that, the instructors and, and the aides and everybody who contribute to such a, a beautiful performance, very moving. To see those little kids up there, you know, singing. I, I, I love stuff like that.
All dressed in red.
Yeah, our, our district shines with, um, you know, the arts and, and, uh, music and it's not only academics. It's, it's just wonderful. And I just want to compliment, uh, Dr. Podesta and her entire team over there. They're, they're outstanding.
It's a good program.
I had the privilege to attend the, uh, Middle School Steering Committee, uh, recently. We, uh, worked on finalizing the IB policy for academic integrity for the middle years program. Super exciting. Um, the team put a lot of thoughtful ideas into, um, creating something that's really good for kids, um, age appropriate for our middle school students, um, and versatile because what academic integrity looks like at fifth grade is very different than what it looks like at eighth grade. And I really appreciated the thought that went into it. Um, there's a wonderful team of people working on this, so I just wanted to thank them for their work. Um, and we are also planning some events for our, our kids at the end of the school year. Super exciting to, to work with the PTA and come together and really put up something nice for the kids for the end of school.
I, I, you know, I, I often hear, um, comments about the difference between elementary school, middle school. Um, and I'd like, I mean, if positive things are happening, is there a way of like getting this out to parents so that they, especially parents of like elementary school kids who are worried about their kids going to middle school?
Right.
But giving them the confidence that, that we're working on making it better and including their input or, I don't know, I just, I'd like to change the perception that seems to be out there.
I used to be a middle school teacher. So I think that middle school.
Is tough.
Is tough. And it's tough everywhere. So let that be clear. Um, I think that we should always keep working at it. Um, we are unique in that we start middle school at fifth grade. Um, and from what I know about the middle school, having been a parent, having worked there for just a short time, I was really able to see the intentionality that goes into making sure that fifth graders are fifth graders and that eighth graders are eighth graders, um, and everything in between. And so I think the work that, that is being done is moving the ship in the right direction. I am so happy to be a part of that steering committee. And I, I just want to say that the steering committee is really important. And I would urge more parents to join. Um, there are two or three parents on each of the steering committees that I participate on, and I would love to see more parent voice. Um, but in order to do that, we would probably have to offer different opportunities for steering committee that are not at three PM or at, you know, one o'clock in the afternoon. Um, you know, I chose to leave work early so that I could get to that ste, steering committee the other day. Um, making, perhaps making it more feasible to parents to be able to join would be, um, some feedback that I would give. Um, but the exciting factor of the IB program coming down to the middle school is, is a wonderful thing, in my opinion. Um, and I encourage parents to ask questions. Don't go by assumptions. Don't go by what you see on Facebook. Don't go by what you heard from a neighbor. Call and ask. If there's any district who is transparent about what, what they do, it is Putnam Valley. So if you have questions, get involved. If you have questions, call. If you have questions, email. Don't be afraid to do that. That's why the staff are here. Um, that's why the people at this table are here. Um, and, and make your questions known. And if you have feedback, offer it. Right? We, no one can change what they don't know about. So I would suggest to the public that if you have questions about middle school, especially our incoming fifth grade for next year, I have one that's gonna be coming up to the middle school next year, um, and one that's going into the high school, and one that's going into the elementary school. So I will have lots of questions as I go through that journey. And I sure will be asking, I, I urge the public to ask as well.
Thank you. Yeah, either one?
Good. I just want to wish everyone a happy February break. Be safe.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's right. They're, they're off next week, everybody. Except Helen and I.
Our life is tough.
We have work to do on policy.
I'm working too.
We appreciate your service. Um, I, I wanted to comment on, on Dr. Love's. I, I wanted to comment on Dr. Luff's presentation tonight. I am so proud to be on those calls with our senators and assemblymen and have him on too, representing Putnam Valley. He's much more articulate, you know, he has a lot of the facts and data that I don't always have at my fingertips. I just, and it's just, it's, not every district has a superintendent or a board member that sits on them. So I'm really appreciative of all that, of his support, of advocacy. And to that issue, we got a thing from West Putt about voter voice, about questions to send to your senators. Did you all get that?
Yeah.
I know that they, they actually want us to give it to parents and community members. I'm not, I'm not clear on how to do that. But I would at least like us as board members to send out those letters to our senators and assembly, asking for the support on the issues that West Putt and LHEC have identified.
Barbara, your involvement with so many of these organizations and advocacy groups, it's much appreciated, really. You're at everything and
Absolutely.
It's noted and it's appreciated, and I thank you for that.
Happy to do it. It's important work, I think, you know, that
And you do a lot of work.
We cannot do it alone, just us, Putnam Valley.
Right.
We're, you know, we can't. We need to stand together.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, any other comments? So I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.